Pardon?
I'll go through it when we, um.
Yeah.
When we just, you know, when we get to that part of the meeting.
Okay, and obviously you know that Josh is going to be a little bit on the.
Yep, he told me he was gonna be a little late, and I think Mark, once he comes on, Mark might be jumping off. Is that right, Mark?
Yes, I think so. Possible.
Audio's a little echoey. Hey, by the way, did anybody catch that planning board meeting last night?
Dan was there.
Uh, Dan was there, yeah. That audio was absolutely terrible. You couldn't understand most of what was said, and oftentimes it would freeze.
Yeah, that's why, that's why, you know, I, that's why I say, uh, doing Zoom, doing a hybrid in the main hall really doesn't work for technical reasons. Um, if committees want to do hybrid, they really should be downstairs in the conference rooms. We have those set up with screens and microphones and everything, uh, internet, you know, good internet connection, computers and all that, but it, uh, unfortunately, you know, the hybrid option just doesn't work well in the main hall.
Did, did we, do we have a, uh, an article that we passed for audio update?
Yeah, uh, that wouldn't have helped with, with that, but, um, that's more about when you're actually in the town hall.
Okay.
You know, getting, improving the sound quality of the main hall. Um, yeah, we're working on that.
That's where the problem was last night, in the main hall.
Oh, I thought you meant folks who were tuning in by Zoom.
No, no, it had nothing to do with the Zoom. It was the, the audio from the, uh, microphones.
Gene, it wasn't really a problem. I mean, they were just in the wrong room. If they were in the right room, it would have been perfect.
Yeah, exactly. No, but nobody reminded me of how bad that town hall is.
Yeah, that big room echoes a lot. I was even, I was in person last night, I could still not hear great because it just bounces everywhere.
Yeah, every, every surface is hard in the main hall. So that's why we're, we're, we've, uh, we're making progress on getting, uh, curtains and drapes for the windows, which will match like the historical features of the, of the building, and then plus it'll provide some sound benefits, and then we're gonna, uh, look into better speaker system as well. Um, but basically softening the space up, uh, will prevent some of that echo.
Okay, we're all aboard?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Six thirty two.
I'm make a motion to open the Wednesday, September twenty first, two thousand twenty-two Board of Selectmen meeting at six thirty one.
Seconded.
Roll call vote?
Mark, I'll go.
Jean can't the eye. Mark, you're going to, um.
The opening comments?
The opening comments.
Okay, um, like to announce, curbside leaf pickup begins in October, but every Monday except Columbus Day, leaves must be in bio, bio gradable bags only. No open barrels, roots, root balls or branches bigger than four inches in diameter. Bags must be out by seven AM. Compost area open on Wednesday and Saturday from nine AM to three PM. Um, two thousand twenty-two resident stickers are required. Visit the Hattie Hall for a list of acceptable material. Recycling for metals and white goods, goods, TVs, uh, computers is the last Saturday of each month from eight AM to twelve PM behind the DPW of Flash Road. Resident stickers required. Visit the Hattie Hall for more information and required fees. Food clinic and the heart residents and employees, employees only, Wednesday, September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two at the Hattie Hall. High dose clinics for people sixty-five years and older is from ten AM to twelve PM. Regular dose for people eighteen and older is from three AM to five PM, uh, three PM to five PM. Um, visit the Public Health Department page at the Hattie Hall dot org to register. Limit walks, limited walk-in availability based on inventory. We're waiting on more inventory for the high dose food shot. Once we see, there'll be a new lane for people to register. Farmers Market, October fifteenth, from ten AM to one PM at Flash Road Park. Visit the Farmers Market, uh, page at the Hattie Hall for your business application. Want to get information updates by email? Contact, uh, K Taylor at the Hattie Hall. Yeah, I think that's it for, um, announcements, Gene.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you want to continue on and do the, the new business?
Uh, I'm, I'm glad I have the opportunity to do this. Um, there's a motion to appoint, uh, the, of the appointment of a new treasurer collector. Uh, I move that the Board of Selectmen go through the appointment of Ed Locke to the position of treasurer collector effective September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Seconded.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate, um, uh, Ed, um, taking this position and Tony and Allison, I know that you you had a lot of very, very qualified people for this, for this job, and, um, you went through a number of interviews. And it seems to me that Ed really stood out among all of the, all of the applicants, so, um, you know, as most of you know, Ed is, uh, is a local guy from the heart, um, and it's really good to have you on board, so. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I really would just like to thank, you know, the Board of Selectmen and obviously the Town Administrator, Tony and Allison. Excited about the opportunity to, uh, join the town hall team and, um, serve the town in the heart. Looking forward to the future. Thanks again, everybody.
You can save on gas anyway, Ed, so.
Yeah. Ed, thank you so much and welcome aboard. This is great having you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mark covered pretty much all of it. We had, um, probably about ten applicants originally. We narrowed it down, um, conducted some inter, conducted interviews with the top candidates. Um, you know, and, and Ed really stood out as, uh, with his professional experience. You know, he really stood out as the right, as the right candidate for us. Uh, we're excited about that professionalism and, um, experience he brings that he's gonna bring to the treasurer collector's office, um, as well as, um, some new ideas that he has of ways to improve, uh, the customer, um, you know, interface for the town and, um, you know, improve upon our, our procedures there. So, uh, he's already got started. He's already, you know, jumped right into it, and, um, we're really excited, uh, for him to be part of the finance team up here at the town hall, so, um, you know, thank you, uh, Selectmen for, uh, supporting this appointment.
Very good. Roll call vote?
Mark, I'll go.
Jean can't the eye.
Okay, we have some event requests to approve. Mr. Chairman, one for, uh, a book sale, one for holiday fair. I move that the Board of Selectmen go to approve the following event request. Friends of the Hart Public Library Book Sale on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two from nine AM to three PM in front of the Hart Library at fifteen Pleasant Street, uh, Nahat, Mass. And also the annual Women's Club Holiday Fair on Saturday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two from nine AM to three PM at the Hattie Hall.
Seconded. It also indicates that the organizers for the library book sale will be blocking off a portion of the street. This was approved by the DPW Police and Fire Chief with no objections and no details needed. Lobster, lobster, oh, roll call vote.
Mark, I'll go. Mark, I'll go.
Jean can't the eye.
Um, okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen go to approve the lobster trap storage leases for the term of one year beginning September first, first, two thousand twenty-two to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Is that right? On two thousand twenty-three, is that right, I think? Uh, to the following people: Anthony Alessi, Mark Rurbin, Justin Mahoney, Rick Miletty, Joshua Mahoney, and Tucker Aller. All, all the names mentioned above have signed the lease and have paid the required rental fees.
Seconded.
Um, uh, the compost area looks really good, uh, Tony down there, and I know that the, uh, all the lobstermen have done a great job of keeping and maintaining their, their areas. Um, things, things look a lot better down there, so thanks, thanks to you, Zach, and also the lobster man for, um, for keeping everything in good order.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think we've had a, um, you know, we, we've kind of created in, in, in just speaking with the lobstermen and kind of hearing about what their, you know, preferences are as far as schedule goes and how we do things. Easy adjustments on the town of the town, on the side of the town in the heart, so I think we're in a good rhythm right now with how these leases uh, coincide with their fishing schedule and, um, you know, when the traps are in the water and, you know, so. Uh, and when it makes sense to do some cleanup down there and keep it nice and clean, so, um, yeah, it's going, it's going well.
The, the, the whole dump area is looking really good to start to empty that out. All of that fill, which is, is really creating a nice, uh, area to, to go in for the people that are just using it for composting. Uh, hey, there's several names missing. Does any, anything come in since this was printed?
Uh, no, this, this is everything that had been received at, at the time of when it was sent out to you guys this afternoon, so if anything new came in, um, if not problem, we'll take it up at the next meeting.
So, yeah, okay, all right, great. Roll call vote?
Mark, I'll go.
Jean can't the eye. The Northern Strand letter.
Um, okay, so thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. I forwarded, uh, each of you individually the copy of the Northern Strand, uh, the, the latest draft of the letter to be sent to the um, regarding the Northern Strand project, and I wanted to take this opportunity to, to deliberate over the, over the draft. Um, it was, the, the original draft was, you know, was kind of, uh, ran on a little too long, in my opinion. So I, the, the latest draft that you have received, um, I cut it down uh, and kind of tried to stick to the, to the top points. So orig, you know, the, the letter starts off by, you know, thanking, um, thanking, uh, DEA and Mastock for the opportunity to make comments, thanking, um, the Baker Polio Administration and ma, former Mayor McGee and Mayor Nicholson in the city of Lynn for, you know, their vision on the future of the oceanfront and, you know, developments along the lineway. Um, we talked about some of the new residential developments that are gonna be occurring on the lineway in the future and other changes, so our, one of our concerns is that it's hard to really predict what the impacts of the bike lane uh, is going to be, are going to be, because those projects haven't really, um, come to fruition yet, but we know they're on the horizon, so. Asking to take a little bit closer look at when those projects occur, how this bike lane is gonna have an impact on, um, you know, added vehicles on the lineway and traffic congestion can lead to more actually negative environmental, uh, impact. Um, we have some specific, some, a couple of specifics we talked about in this letter is that they consider moving, there's, at the end of the northbound side, as approaches the rotary, the bike lane pops off of the roadway and goes onto the grass. We're asking them to move that, uh, a little bit further back away from the entrance to the rotary. Um, so there, that right turn only lane for Nahat residents, um, stays intact a little bit before you get to the actual entrance of the rotary. Uh, we also ask that they trim the size of the island on the exit ramp towards Windshore Drive. There's a bottleneck point there that actually leads to a lot of the traffic backup. Uh, if they were to slim that down, you could have two lanes of traffic coming off of the rotary, which might help with reducing some of the congestion. Uh, and lastly, we ask them to really consider additional plans or study on the endpoint of the bike lane, which is at the Ward Bathhouse, and improving, uh, maybe adding some additional signage or direction to cyclists that would be on the bike lane, giving them direction as to which way to go. Um, certainly, we don't wanna, we want to make sure that the bike lane doesn't encourage cyclists on the causeway, and if it were to, that there'd be a dedicated lane for them, if anything. Uh, we don't want just cyclists riding, uh, the causeway in vehicle travel lanes. Um, so there seems to be a little bit of, uh, more work to be done there. That, we gave them some drawings, and then lastly, we asked them to consider conducting additional public meetings, uh, with us, Swamp Scott and Marblehead, uh, which, you know, the community, our communities and more north of Lynn, uh, will be impacted, um, will be, the commute will be impacted as you're traveling northbound to the rotary, so, uh, we'd like to see some public outreach to our surrounding communities as well.
You know, it is, uh, so, some of you may or may not know, listening in. Um, because of the open meeting law, we're not allowed as Selectmen to get together in a quorum style, which would be any two of us talking about situations at any given time, other than during an open meeting. So in face of that, what we do do is we meet individually with, with Tony, and we discuss some of the things that, that we talk about during the open meeting. The point I'm making is Tony, in these individual meetings and then bringing it forth to these meetings, has done a tremendous job on restructuring this Northern Strand letter. He spearheaded this for the months prior. So what we see coming out of it most likely will be a lot of what he's put his effort into.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thanks, sir. Well deserved. Ongoing business. Mark, do you have anything?
I have nothing, uh, Mr. Chairman, no.
I just, I had, I had a couple of things. Well, actually, really one. The RNAV program, Dan, are you ready to speak to that? I know that you were involved in some meetings, and I've had some people asking about the, um, airfare over the, uh, Little Nahat and actually over Nahat.
Yeah, uh, there was a meeting recently, the, the, um, Mass Port CAC Community Action Committee met. They didn't discuss the, I didn't go to the meeting. On the agenda, the RNAV two-two-left did not appear, so I didn't feel I really needed to be there, and Bob D'Amico is our representative, anyways, he, I imagine he was there as our representative. But the only thing on the agenda that would have really touched upon the RNAV two-two-left is this, the basic process. I think it's called a point four one, which is basically a, um, a reference to a ruling from the FAA, I believe. Uh, and it, it would have just discussed the basic process in assessing the impact of not only the two-two-left alteration, the RNAV two-two-left alteration, but all the different approaches that are being considered, because of course, they're all, there's a bunch of them, not just two-two-left, it's probably, I don't know, fifteen or so. In any event, um, we did get some, Bob D'Amico did mention that he thought he believed they were already flying the new approach, which of course means they're, they're taking a dog leg left over the causeway rather than coming straight in like over, uh, I guess that would be Salem, Marblehead, and down the line, Lynn and over Winthrop and whatnot. I have not seen that in IFR setting, and I've checked with two of my comrades that are in the right seat, one in Spirit and one at Jeploo, and they, they say they're not, they're, plates are going straight like they have always done. So I'm not quite sure what Bob, Bob is seeing. What I suspect he may be seeing are planes being vectored in a VFR situation, uh, over the causeway perhaps to, to meet up, intercept what they call the final approach course. And that's not the RNAV approach. That's what they call a vectoring. That's basically AT air traffic control saying, okay, turn to a heading zero three zero, turn for a heading zero nine zero, and so on, until they finally intercept that final approach course. I think I suspect he's saying, and I'm also suspect, suspect that he's seeing that on smaller planes. You know, the, the Cape Ares, the regional aircraft, the CRVs. So that's what I suspect he's saying, but as far as the progress regarding the two-two, RNAV, I still think it's grinding through the system, um, with nothing really new to report.
And, and what is, what's the, for people's information, what is RNAV supposed to do?
It just gives greater, okay, so the way these aircrafts fly, okay, pretend you can't see anything outside the aircraft, the cockpit, so you basically look at a, you're in the clouds. Uh, so you basically fly off your instruments, and there are, but take, there are ground-based navigation instruments, and there are basically satellite-based, uh, navigation instruments. And the RNAV is, is improving the satellite base, because basically it's GPS for a plane, is what it really comes down to. As opposed of relying on instruments on the ground, um, it relies on basically more satellite progress and gives them a bit more, I think it actually does two things. It gives them a bit more information in terms of vertical and lateral information. And based on the structure of the actual approach, I think it saves a lot of time and fuel for aircrafts coming in from the northeast. Uh, because instead of having to come all the way around and come over Salem, uh, it's August, whatever it is, they can actually just sort of, you know, cut it off and then, and make it quicker and, uh, and, and less fuel. So there, I think there are two changes that they're, they're eyeing, with of course, the barometer being how this is impact to folks on the ground.
Thank you. With the last question, what does RNAV stand for?
Oh, you're killing me. I should know this. Um, uh, R, that's, NAV is navigation. R, um, oh, I'm embarrassed. I have my pilot book right here. I gotta look.
Come on, Dan.
It basically just means GPS, is what it comes down to. It means GPS. It's a, it, well, without getting into the weeds, it just means GPS.
Okay, thanks.
But what does the R stand for?
Yes, I know. I'm looking it up right now in the search. I don't know. Thank you for pointing it out, though, Tony. I appreciate you pointing that out. You're gonna get the information in two seconds. Hold on, but don't, don't wait for that. Oh, RNAV, uh, uh, should, uh, all right, just talk about yourself.
Area navigation.
Area, yeah, yeah.
Area navigation, it says online here, but even though, it's not ANAV, but it's RNAV.
It's definitely RNAV, and sometimes your academics don't line exactly up, um, with the, so actually, sometimes these come out of a French word, um, but I'm not quite sure this is the case here.
Regional navigation, maybe?
No, no, it'd be regional. It's specific to the airport. But nice try, though. RNAV is an, it's a, it's an approach. It's an approach to the runway, right? It's not anything outside really, say, ten miles of the airport environment.
One other question commonly, thank you, by the way, Dan, that's well done.
Thank you.
Um, Coast Guard housing. Any updates on, on that?
Yeah, yeah, we, uh, as promised, we, we, we held true to our word in our letters to the residents that as of September first, we'll expect them to be out. Uh, many of them, I think they're, I think they're number eleven or so. Um, many of them, some of them are already out. Uh, some are on the verge. They just need a few more days, and some are really have a story to tell. So I expect at some point, uh, we're gonna hear from some of those folks firsthand, but we did issue our notices to quit as promised, so there was no surprise to anyone. And I actually hand-delivered a lot of them myself, and no one was surprised. They knew everything. They were well informed that this was gonna happen. Uh, but some of them are just, are just sort of stuck. So what it comes down to is I think at least half will be vacated with no problem, probably a little more than that, but I think we're gonna have two or three folks that are gonna have some, some tough stories to tell that at some point we're gonna have to address.
Okay, is, Dan, does that put us, does that, um, mean we need to, at, at some point, we need to, if not already, uh, enter an eviction, a legitimate eviction process?
Yeah. It, it, yeah, if, if we, the next step is to, in terms of vacate, getting the base, places vacated, the next step is to go to Lynn District and seek court orders, because we can't do anything without a court order. But we've started that process by issuing the notices to quit, because we've got to issue those, and then we've got a way to pay period, which in this case is thirty days, in most cases thirty days for rentals. And then after that, we can go to the next step, and, and everyone knows that, because it's in the letter that we sent them. Um, so that's gonna be a surprise to no one, and that letter expires in nine days. Now, that's one aspect of it. The other aspect is, as Tony will tell you, is that the current path of the entire project sits now with the Town Own Land Study Committee, who is obligated to provide a recommendation uh, as to their thoughts on disposing of the property in the way town meeting suggested.
Yep, so that committee, you know, I sit on that committee, uh, we've been working on, uh, the Antigo Way property, um, sale. Need to finalize that and shift gears into the Coast Guard housing and pick up some, picks up, pick up some progress on that conversation for sure. Um, I'll also say that we have, uh, you know, now that we were kind of hesitant to beginning the RFP process for finding a contractor to do demolition, asbestos removal, and oil tank removal. Um, because those bid, those bids are only, uh, good for so long, and if we were gonna be dealing with, um, tenants that needed to be, um, you know, that were still inside the homes, we didn't wanna run out of time with those bids, but now I think we're probably approaching a comfortable spot to start that process. Um, so I'll work with Dan, kind of dot the i's, cross the t's on that timeframe and see if it makes sense to start putting that, that work together. Um, and I'm also happy to report that, you know, we negotiated with National Grid, um, with their, uh, gas main upgrade that they're doing on Castle Road, that they essentially prepare for those properties to receive gas once they are subdivided and sold off, so it should be, it should make for an easier connection, uh, when that time comes.
Tony, does, does, um, National Grid pay for road replacement? Castle Road?
Um, so typically, what they will do is they'll put a temporary patch in, um, and especially if they're in the fall, and then they'll come back in the spring and, and, and do a more permanent patch.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was referring to.
Uh, Josh just joined us as well.
Yeah. Hi, Josh.
Hi, sorry to be so late. Tied up with work.
Um, so, yeah, so they pay, there's, in some cases, where depending on, um, the pre-existing condition of the roadway, depending on how impactful their, their work is, we can get a little bit more out of them. For instance, they're, they're paying for the curb-to-curb repaving of Nahat Road from Pond Street down in the spring, where they did that big gas main job, um, over a year ago. On Castle Road, uh, we're gonna have them basically mill and grind and patch two feet on either end of, on both sides of every trench that is on Castle Road from Nahat to Flash. Um, and just get them to clean up where they do work, because we have some sewer work to be done, we have sidewalk work to be done, so it makes sense, doesn't make sense to do a full curb-to-curb restoration when we're gonna be cutting it up again, you know, sometime soon. So it, every, it's, every case, it's, there's a lot of different factors into how much repaving they pay for.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, can you take one more?
Yeah.
How, how about, um, the engineering, uh, on, uh, the Lowland's floodplain?
Uh, so we were expecting a report, um, by the end of the month. I actually was supposed to speak with, um, Amy Rutledge from Duboy and King, yesterday, but we didn't end up connecting, so I'll probably try and connect with her tomorrow. Um, and I sent a, an update on that to, uh, the Lowlands neighborhood, letting them know that, you know, we were expecting to have a, have a report, you know, in the next couple of weeks here, so, um, we're, we're nearing, nearing the finish line of that process.
Great, thank you. Josh, you have anything you want to, uh, discuss on ongoing business?
Uh, no.
Okay, having, having none, a town administrator's report. I'm sorry, preserving East Point. Do we have anything on that?
Uh, yes, um, the, um, this, uh, is an Article ninety-seven case. Um, the basis of that case is that, the land at East Point, um, that Northeastern dedicated that as, um, uh, conservation land and/or parkland, um, and uh, so the basis of the case was, well, people have been using that area as parkland for fifty years, and therefore it is parkland. In this case, the, the judge decided that there was no legally binding document submitted by Northeastern dedicating that land as conservation land or parkland, and so, uh, therefore, um, ruled against that, uh, that case. Um, it's, um, it's disappointing, but it's not, um, it doesn't change, um, this board's resolve. We stand with the, the people of Nahat and are fully committed to preserving this area as conservation land, as the vast majority of Nahaters do, and, um, you know, the Article ninety-seven would have been, um, a, a less expensive way to, um, ensure that this land stayed as conservation land in perpetu- in perpetuity. Um, but it was never a certain outcome, so, um, that's in fact why we, uh, we proceeded with the, the town meeting blessing to pursue eminent domain, um, has nothing to do with the eminent domain case. Um, so that is, continues to go on, and, um, you know, we as a board are fully committed to, uh, pursuing that. And, uh, there's no quitters, um, on this board of selectmen, and, uh, we're gonna continue to fulfill the wishes of the town to preserve that zone natural resource area as conservation land forever. So, um, yeah, disappointing, but, um, doesn't change, um, the ultimate goals or, um, or, uh, influence the eminent domain case. And, uh, I'll also point out that, um, the town did spend some funds on this case, but they were all reimbursed. So it was sort of in the initial days of uh, joining in the suit, um, KP Law supported that with, you know, some legal, um, documents and whatnot, but, um, that was reimbursed by private funds, so this, this didn't cost the town taxpayers any money. Um, so, um, the focus will now be, uh, fully on the eminent domain case, and, uh, we'll move forward.
Thank you, Josh. That's an excellent summary, by the way. Mark?
No, I, yeah, I, I agree with you, Rob. Great summary, uh, Josh, uh, and, um, things are changing, and we're gonna move ahead, and, um, it would, as Josh said, uh, the Article ninety-seven case would have, uh, made life a lot easier, probably wouldn't have cost any money, because if it was designated as Article ninety-seven land, it would require a two-thirds vote from the state legislature for any development on that property. And we wouldn't have needed the eminent domain, but, uh, the judge, as Josh said, because there was a lack of any legal document, uh, describing it as such, um, that he couldn't, couldn't declare it as Article ninety-seven land. So, Josh, good, good summary, um, and like you said, we're gonna move forward.
Thanks, Mark. I, I will, uh, just say ditto. Town administrator's report.
Um, well, I cut, covered a lot, uh, in that ongoing business. As, as for, uh, paving bids, we did, uh, complete the paving, um, bid process. DNR, uh, was the low bidder at, um, a total of four hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is actually a lot less than expected. So we're, we're very pleased, um, very pleased with this price, because it's gonna allow us to do, you know, maybe a little bit more sidewalk and firm work than, uh, we had originally had the budget for, so, um, they happen to be right next door, I think in Lynn or in Swamp Scott, so, uh, it ends up being a good price for us. So happy to report that. Um, I've been asked a couple of times, you know, what the streets are for this. We've added this information onto our website under DPW. Um, but the streets, again, are Intervale from Ocean Street to Winter Street, Nahat Road from Spring to Pond, Castle Road from Flash to Nahat. Um, again, that Castle Road, that's actually was, that Castle Road part from Flash to Nahat was the, was an alternate in the bid. We may have them do that in the spring if we get our sewer work, our other utility sewer and/or potentially stormwater work, depending on what comes out of the, uh, Duboy and King stormwater study. Um, if we get that done in time, then we might have them do paving in the spring for that portion. Continuing on, it's Nahat Road from thirty-six Nahat Road to Little Nahat Road. Essentially, that's the, uh, the cut line from when they, like around the bulletin board, from when the causeway was repaved, back all the way to Little Nahat Road. Walton Road, uh, from Wharf to Forty Steps Lane, Lafayette from Greystone to the end, Little Nahat Road, uh, from Nahat to Howe Road, and Howe Road, uh, from Little Nahat Road all the way to the end. Um, a lot of these streets were either A, listed on the paving, uh, capital plan, or B, uh, recently received underground utility work. So we really are trying to, it's not, it's not always doable, but to the best possible, um, way, we try to, you know, use the paving management plan to dictate where we're going to be doing our water work and our sewer work and our stormwater work. Um, and then we're relaying that information to National Grid, so they can get in there and do their underground gas work. So then, once all that underground stuff is done, we can come in and do sidewalks and repaving, instead of having to, you know, re- repave something and then have to cut it up a short time later. So that's what we're trying to, that's the, that's the goal. That's how we come up with these plans. A lot of different factors, uh, in it, but, and, uh, also, we, we, uh, announced today that we received a, um, CZM hazard mitigation grant of, uh, ninety-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. When you add in the thirty-two thousand, six hundred dollars from the town match, it's about a hundred and thirty grand. Uh, that, that money will be used to, um, design, um, and prepare for permit a restoration to the Forty Steps Bank, which we have money from FEMA to do that work from the twenty-eighteen storms. Um, the issue was we could never get the previous designs permitted, so we now, um, we, we have this grant that's gonna allow us to design something that the regulators are gonna be comfortable with permitting, and then we can use the FEMA money to get that work done. Um, you might have also seen a RFP out there for coastal engineering services. When you, when, when we are utilizing FEMA funds, like the ones from the twenty-eighteen storms, to make these repairs, FEMA requires that the owner, um, meet the most strict stringent procurement rules and regs. Massachusetts, uh, state procurement rules are, um, oh, ninety-nine percent more strict than the federal guidelines, except for the fact that engineering services in Massachusetts under master procurement law aren't required to be, uh, procured for this service. However, federal procurement law does require you to procure engineering. So that's what we're doing with that process right now, procuring, procuring the engineering services, so that we can, as soon as that's done, where our goal is to complete the Little Nahat portion of the Short Beach Dune, with the engineer from that RFP process, then do the, uh, playground right next to it, and then move to Forty Steps, um, with this grant. So we're, we're making some significant progress. Uh, we had a great conversation with the folks from FEMA today. They're very pleased with the direction we're heading in, so, yeah, we're getting there.
Excellent. Comments?
If anyone in the public, uh, wants to speak, just either unmute yourself, raise your hand, and, uh, and then announce your name and, uh, address.
This is Citizens Forum now. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, no one?
No one.
No one. Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
A move that we adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded, sorry about that, Leo.
Roll call.
Josh, enter mine.
Roll call, right.
Gene Canty eye. Good night, gentlemen.
Thank you, good night.